...of allegiance, please.
Councilman Forbes, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Okay.
I talk quiet, remember?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Here.
Councilman DeWitt?
Here.
Councilman Slata? Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Here.
Councilman Gibson? Councilman Forbes?
Here. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment, please. Anybody from the public like to make a comment at this time?
Good morning. Rick Steinmeier. Impact fees are very important to the city to build the roads and the schools and the parks and all the other things that are involved in the impact fees. As I look at it, it wouldn't hurt, it doesn't hurt the people that are already here that have paid their impact fees, have paid taxes in Benita. If you want to live in Benita, you get to join the club and pay for some of the roads that we all have paid for over the years. Another aspect of it, it would raise the existing property values for everybody since this bill has already been paid by the people that are already here. This would allow, this would raise the property values throughout the city and then the city could offer a tax cut. Great. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Anybody else from the public?
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Mike Maurer. I'm a commercial real estate broker and I represent the Burnwood Land Portfolio, which is the largest commercial land portfolio in the city. I do agree that impact fees do serve a purpose and they are necessary, but in order to grow the tax base and to encourage businesses to move into the city of Benita, we have to make sure we're competitive. And I'm on the front lines answering the phone, talking to companies that are looking to move to Benita. And there's quite a few, given our geographical point as a middle point between Naples and Fort Myers. The ability to serve both districts, the beautiful infrastructure that we have in place now with the city and the quality of life we have, there's a lot of people with eyes on Benita. We have to make sure we're competitive so that we don't lose these businesses to Southern Lee County, unincorporated Lee County, and Northern Collier County. I'm here today to address specifically hotel impact fees. The reason is I have a local developer who's looking to construct anywhere between 100 to 120 room hotel in the city. After we got under contract during the due diligence period, it was revealed to us and to my surprise that the city of Benita Springs impact fee schedule for this specific use seemed to be out of whack. Unincorporated Lee County at this time charges $2,400 a room or key for a all suite hotel up to 120 rooms. Collier County, if you were to use the northernmost district, which would be North Naples, they're at around $3,500 a key. The city of Benita Springs is nearly $7,500 a key. So with that deal on the table right now, I would highly recommend and request from the council to look at this specific use category as it relates to impact fees. I'm not asking for a complete rewrite of the entire impact fee schedule, although I think we do need to look at the whole schedule at a later date to make sure that we're competitive. I don't think we need to be as low as Lee County, but I don't think we need to be as high as Collier. I think we need to be somewhere in between to be competitive. There are, in my, on my desk right now, I have five contracts for businesses looking to relocate to the city of Benita Springs, whether it's at the Burnwood Park of Commerce, at Benita Beach Road 975, or on Old 41 by the Charter School. This issue has arisen in nearly every one of those deals, to the point that I've lost three of them. But there's two on the table right now and I have a number of people looking. This issue's going to continue to arise and I want to make sure that we're on top of it. You know, we can't give the farm away. We have to make sure that we're fiscally sound, but at the same time, we have to be competitive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public at this time? Okay, seeing none. We're going to move on actually to the discussion of the impact fees. Item five, Carl, would you like to introduce this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, council members. We'd like to bring up Ann Wright, our finance director, who's going to make a presentation on the impact fees.
Too dark.
No?
Do you want me to start?
I don't know.
John and I talked that I would start and then John.
Okay, so just somebody needs to tell me, okay? All right, so now it's going to be Audrey.
And let's turn the light, is it okay if we turn the lights back on? I don't want to be giving you guys legal information in the dark. You all received an outline from me yesterday. You should have a copy right now. The impact fee outline. You have a copy?
Six page.
Right, six page.
Six page.
Is it one in the back?
Okay, so.
Yeah, yeah, we're good.
When council started its strategic priorities, it asked staff to answer three questions or look at three questions or help council with three issues. One was whether to consider authorizing an impact fee study, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes. Discuss parameters for use of park impact fee, impact fee monies for bicycles and walking trails. And the third is the history of impact fee credits with a view towards a better understanding of procedures of how impact fee credits are granted. To start with impact fee studies, and then John has a more interesting PowerPoint, but I just want to make sure you have the framework of the law dealing with impact fees. So first of all, just understand that impact fees came through home rule power. This was one of those, set it up as a user fee and it was able to survive many challenges of not being a tax because again, taxes are limited in Florida to what the legislature allows local governments to do. But we can always do user fees wherever there's a special benefit and we're able to show that benefit. Have, was set up through home rule power. Now, school impact fees are a good example of something where we talked about school impact fees. If you have a adult living facility, do you charge a school impact fee? Of course not, because there's no children going there from there. Same thing if it's an age restricted community. Because again, they don't have a special impact or a special benefit that's received from there. The dual rational nexus test is the test used for impact fees and that's explained in the outline. The main thing I need to point out is when looking at doing an impact fee study, you need to make sure you have all your projects in place or identified. And the reason you do so is so that the true amount of the impact fee can be calculated. If you don't have many items in the impact fee to pay for the, or needed to be paid for the impact fee, you won't have much in the expenditure of funds for that purpose because you won't be able to show any benefit. Impact fee studies are very important because you need to have local and recent data to be able to sustain any kind of challenge to an impact fee challenge. Lee County has been challenged, many cities have been challenged around here. So it's very important for that to get an impact fee study. But again, you don't do the impact fee study until you know what your projects are and are identified. When city did its last impact fee study, it did include Benita Beach Road and it included it as previously contemplated, so that is something that probably will need to be corrected the next go around with the Benita Beach Road vision. So the city staff is in the process of doing some of these. Park impact fee monies, you have the provisions. This is going on page three of the outline. Going to the provisions of what the parks fees can be paid for. In addition to the two park fees, you can also use road impact fees for bike ways and certain pedestrian improvements when it's connected to a capital improvement project. And then below that, I pointed out that there's an attorney general opinion. You cannot use your normal local option gas tax, but there is a portion of the gas tax identified by statute which can be used for construction of sidewalks, bike paths, and even landscaping. And then also in that attorney general opinion, they also mentioned there are other forms that of gaining revenue to build these projects and that could include special assessments that are out there. And then I also put down other legally available revenue. Impact fee credit history, I identified some of the projects that have been done, starting with a project that occurred even prior to the city's incorporation. There was a project Imperial Parkway that was built by Long Bay, which is Benita Bay, or one of Benita Bay's companies, built from Benita Beach Road to the Collier County line. They received impact fee credits and one of our first interlocal agreements with Lee County in the master transportation plan was allowing Lee County to let those units be used outside of the city boundary. So in other words, we got the road, but we did not have to give credits back from this sub account because that was in their development agreement. The big development agreement that the city did was sections one and two, which we now, most people would refer to it as Benita National or Benita Landings. And in that case, there were a couple different obligations. There was the fire station obligation. I think there was part payment and part donation. Another obligation was the Benita Beach Road expansion. So the properties out there, the developer out there did the road work, the widening of Benita Beach Road from Benita Grand to Logan Boulevard Extension, which will have another name eventually. And in addition to that, they also did onsite improvements, which was another mile, but that was related more to their development. There's some smaller impact fee credits that are mentioned in here. And in addition, based on what you asked at your workshop recently, I also put eligible uses for road impact fees. If I remember, at your budget workshop on July 13th, you requested that on page five and on page six, eligible uses of park impact fees. I hope that provides a bit of a framework. I think John has a PowerPoint and then you guys can discuss.
Great. Thank you, Audrey. John Domer.
Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Mayor. Counsel. Now we can dim the lights. What Audrey provided you was a lot of the nuts and bolts. While we'll go into a little bit of the regulatory portion of impact fees, my discussion is mainly on philosophy and how this council wants to approach the idea of impact fees going into the future. So starting off, this duplicates some of what Audrey had said, how we have, are able to charge impact fees, what type of impact fees we charge. You have in your backup information, not only, excuse me, the city's impact fees, but also comparative impact fees for other jurisdictions. And then we're going to go to figuring out how we want to proceed. Impact fees are created by the Florida Impact Fee Act, no?
They have case law and then.
Well, that's started, but it was created. Thank you, counsel. But I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. The only thing is we do charge 3% for administrative fees on top of the fees, basically to administer and figure out where these are going and how these are going to be processed. We collect roads, parks, and community parks. While we assess and collect fees for schools, fire, and EMS, those do not stay with you. Those go to the different agencies.
Is that accurate, Greg?
Yes, it is.
Okay, just checking. Thanks.
Confirm. This kind of goes into the philosophical discussion on how fees are charged. Right now, generally, we look at residential unit type, either multifamily or single family, and we look at commercial or non-residential uses per thousand square feet to calculate that fee. If you look in your backup information for other jurisdictions, you'll see that, one, other places charge fees that we don't charge and, two, the way that they calculate those fees can be significantly different. If you look, some communities on the East Coast will break down residential units based upon size as well as by type. So a single family house of a certain square footage, if it's within a certain range, will have a rate and if it goes up to a larger size in the next range, will have a higher rate. And that's something that this council could consider if you choose. This is really the crux of most of our discussions. Road impact fees.
So John, the concept there is a bigger house, has more people in it and has more use coming out of it? Is that?
That is the general thought. And it all needs to tie back to what Audrey had talked about, the rational nexus test of how the impact of a use relates to the impact on public facilities or a particular public facility. And the thought there is that house contributes more to road trips especially than a house of a smaller size. Like I was saying, most of our discussions on impact fees discuss road impact fees. When you look at the fire impact fees, EMS impact fees, those tend to generally be lower. Far and away, road impact fees are your highest charge because they're your highest expense. And an impact on a road is going to cost a significant amount more money to improve than if you're looking to expand a park area. And I think Audrey did cover some of the credits. One important distinction to remember when you're looking at credits is the city can only give credit to a developer or a builder for impact fees if they are constructing increased capacity that they do not require for their development. And I think Audrey touched briefly upon the Long Bay improvement for Imperial, Imperial Road at the time, Imperial Parkway today. And the reason why Benita Bay was able to get credit for that road was because they did not need that road to address their impacts. So basically, it was construction above and beyond what they needed and the city therefore gave them the equivalent amount of money they could use elsewhere. Recently, on Old 41 expansions, we looked at a project that was going to take drainage off of Old 41 and use their water management system to store and treat that and we set up an agreement to provide them credit for that area and the cost of the construction of the increased capacity to bring the water off of the road into their lake and then discharge back out. This is what you can use road impact fees for. Basically, you're going to expand the capacity of a roadway. Now, there's been a lot of discussion on what roadway means, whether you could use this for sidewalks, for bike lanes. I've always been of the opinion that those are perfectly acceptable uses. If you are expanding capacity of those areas, you're expanding the capacity of the roadway and it's an appropriate use for those fees.
John, real quick, who makes that final determination? Is it Audrey? Is it Lee County's attorney? Because I know like we.
It really is Audrey.
Let me explain Greg, council, I'm sorry, council member DeWitt's question. And that is at Lee County, for fire impact fees and EMS impact fees, the county attorney's office reviews what the expenditure is and then issues an opinion whether that expenditure is appropriate. We don't have that practice here. When you're talking about fire or EMS impact fees, it's the capital improvement many time or fire trucks or radio systems. And if you show that it has a shelf life, I believe of either three or five years, you're able to show that it's impact fee eligible as a capital improvement. With roads and parks, we don't really go into amenity type things that we're using more land and capital improvements, physical structures. A playground equipment would be.
Well, I guess I'm going back to what John's comment was that in his mind, you could use road impact fees for sidewalks and stuff like that. Who makes, did we just roll the dice or who makes that final, hey, yeah, we can or nah, we probably shouldn't?
I'll give an example. City manager's office and I and Parks and Rec looked at Benita Nature Place and determined a roof could be a capital improvement, a roof replacement. And the reason for the roof replacement, meeting the test, and I wrote a memo explaining why I think that that could be deemed appropriate, was it was changing from a residential use to a institutional use. So that was one of the reasons why you needed to replace the roof. It wasn't just replacing the roof because of old age. And because of that, we did use impact fees, but I believe the final decision was made by the city manager in that case, not necessarily me, but I would give the memo giving guidance.
But we did, we did.
She's passing the buck, Carl.
And yes, I just, I just received it. The answer really is the process that we go through. And the process is that if we have what we think is a clever idea to use impact fees for a particular project, we will run it by the city attorney. And if her, and if her opinion is, after discussion with staff, that she believes it is eligible for use for, for impact fees, then we do it. So that's kind of where we're at. So it's.
Back at you, Audrey.
Do you have a question?
No, just with, actually just to follow up on Greg's question. But particularly with respect to the multimodal aspects, there was a change in law in Lee County that did not, we follow to open things up a little bit?
Yes, and that's on page five of the outline. We amended our, to include the multimodals.
So that's in effect what allows that?
Right. We did that a few years ago. Right. And I want to point out, a good example is pickleball. The YMCA pickleball courts were using regional park impact fees, I believe. Okay, got the nod. And that's because.
You got a couple nods.
Which is good.
Yeah, right.
It's better than getting no's. Because of the fact that we allow people outside of the city to also utilize the pickleball courts as we drafted it. So it met that definition of the capital improvement, which is also on page six for regional park, but not community park.
I got a quick question just for background. On the school impact fees, and I guess fire as well, but we don't set those rates, do? Who sets?
The county does.
Okay, right.
I have a question about credits on page four. One of the things that is listed that it's prohibited is local roads. How does that work? What do they mean by local roads?
Roads are classified in the state of Florida as arterial collectors or local roads. So that's based on the road character and are very similar to your body and arterial, something that takes traffic, large movements. Collector brings, brings things to the artery. And a local road basically serves the neighborhood, just like the people on the block that are there. Is that about a fair enough?
It's fair. It's.
We get into fights over local versus collector sometimes.
My question is because of a specific issue that's, that was already granted a credit and I didn't know whether that road was local or, I mean, how do you grant that?
If I were to look at that road today, I would look at those, both of those roads as local. However, at the time that they were reviewed and at the time that the credit was issued, obviously, the opinion was different.
So that was deemed a non-local road and that's why the developer got the credit?
And I would have to go back and do the research because I'm not exactly sure what the regulations were at that time. I don't think anybody did anything that was illegal or pushing the boundaries. I just, I would need to just take a look to see what they were permitted to do and how they justified that, that credit.
And I want, because we have Mike Maurer in here, I want to also point out, I didn't put it in the outline because we're talking about impact fee credit history, but sometimes developers say, oh, the credit's not really worth it or we want to just provide that service. And his father was basically the catalyst for Burnwood Parkway. We were going to issue impact fee credits and Mr. Maurer, senior Mr. Maurer, actually urged Benita Bay in a meeting that I attended with Gary, that's a nice word, with Gary Price and the Benita Bay folks and at that time, Mayor Paul Pass. So the state's a while. And they ended up donating the road instead of getting impact fee credits. They were asking for credits originally, the Benita Bay portion. And so we were able to build Burnwood Parkway, aside from the railroad crossing, relatively inexpensively.
Yes, Fred.
Couple questions. To address the question that Mr. Maurer raised, is there a way that we could, if we, if majority of council agrees that we're out of whack on the motel, that we can do something immediately as opposed to have to do this study and all that?
And actually, we're going to come to that later on, but the answer, the short answer to your question is yes, you can reduce impact fees without going through a lot of the process that it takes to raise impact fees.
Right, okay.
And there's two ways you can reduce it. You can either reduce them to everybody or you can do an independent fee calculation.
When you're calculating impact fees, I know it has to have a relationship to the infrastructure, potential infrastructure costs. Would it be appropriate to consider a community that is already substantially built out so that the infrastructure costs will be higher because the intensity of the use of the existing, like parks and things?
That is taken into consideration as part of the study.
So it would be normal, my question, I don't want to ask a rhetorical, would be that in a more highly built community, the impact fees naturally would be higher because of this, the intensity of the use of the existing infrastructure. Like, for example, Estero versus Benita Springs. Estero has a lot of open space, so you would expect that they would have lower impact fees. But as we, our land is used up and our parks are used up because we have higher population, is that a wrong way of thinking of it?
It is along the lines of what is generally done. The study is intended to look at construction costs, the planned improvements. There's factors that they deal with that I'm very glad I don't have to deal with in calculating these fees. The cost of land, the cost of construction in a local area, those are two of the factors that are considered.
And I want to point out, if you are essentially built out as a community, you probably don't have a lot of projects planned for new growth. So projects that are planned is to accommodate the existing growth and so your impact fees would be lower than if you had more growth and projects for that growth.
It really depends on.
How you characterize it?
When Audrey was identifying the fact that the more information is identified in your capital improvement plan or the more projects you have specifically identified for programming, the easier it is to calculate an accurate impact fee. It's, it's those situations where you're just looking at a generic improvement to calculate a cost, that you may be accurate, you may not, but you're using the best data available at the time. Rio? All right.
One other question related to what Amy raised. So when the study is done by the experts on, and it yields a number, I'm assuming what it yields is a maximum number that can be charged.
That's one way to look at it. What they've done is calculate what they believe is the cost to address impacts per unit, whatever that unit identified is.
So with that, then there's a policy decision laid on that, which could make it lower, could put it at that.
Yes, sir.
Let me understand the question. When the study comes back, they come up with a number based on what they feel is the correct number. Now, this is a defensible number.
Right.
If council increases beyond what's defensible, then it's problematic. If council decreases, they can, that's a policy call.
Right, right. So it could be that other places say, we want more development. We're allowed to charge up here, but we're going to charge down here. A perfect example is the county of Lee.
And I was just about ready to use that as an example. Yes, that's precisely what they did.
And whereas others might say, well, we're in a particular situation and we want to be, from a policy point of view, we want to be at that number.
When that information is provided to you, anything below that number becomes a policy decision for the council.
Thank you. Fred?
Question. I'm assuming that we can give some general guidelines as to our thoughts before the study's done?
You can, but what, what guidelines were you, were you?
Well, for example, it would seem to me that the thing that is bringing the most vehicles in and we've got plenty of it going is residential development. What we don't have is a lot of good commercial stuff. We hope to see it through the visioning study. We hope to see the investment. We made an Old 41 payoff with more commercial and they'll be residential. So I personally think that you want to raise a residential much more than you raise the commercial right now. That doesn't mean later, we can't go the other way.
I think part of that is a philosophical discussion and part of that refers back to what Councilman Flynn was just discussing. If you hire a firm to prepare a study and that study says that a residential unit, whichever type of unit you want to identify, can, creates X dollars of impact or that amount of money will be required to address that impact. If this council chooses to accept that dollar value or they accept to choose a lower dollar value, that is a policy decision. It does become difficult, like the attorney said, if you want to go back and raise above that rate, then there needs to be additional research and. that rate, then there needs to be additional research and information provided to justify that additional cost. That can't be done arbitrarily.
And let me point out to you that when, for road impact fee purposes, the trip generation is the key to determining what the impact fee is going to be. So I'll give an example. When I worked in my prior job, the impact, the person doing the assessment for impact fees wanted to go off manual, you've heard this story, and prior councils have heard this story, so a couple of you have heard, I apologize, wanted to charge a mausoleum the same amount of trip generation as a church. And I was pretty certain, from a trip generation standpoint, there was a one-way, and then there were some visitors, but there really wasn't as much hope, I mean, I don't know about y'all's churches, but, you know, even the, the person who doesn't attend often, is probably going to attend more at a religious institution than attend a mausoleum. You know, there might be a few people who do go there once a week.
But a mausoleum was a one-way trip in?
Yeah, yeah. So I made it very clear that that was the inappropriate way of calculating. You do it based on the cemetery numbers in the ITE trip generation manual. And, but a lot of this, when you go into trip generation, it's a pseudoscience, and I know I've talked about that before, it's almost psychological of how people's habits are in driving. And again, for road impact fees, you're looking at trip generation to be able to do the guidance. So it's that data, the cost of doing road improvements, as well as all the amenities to the roads that are on council's CIP.
Audrey, one other question. Is it, this is a legal, not a study question, but if, for example, a group comes in and they apply for what I call affordable housing, they get more density and they also, maybe we give them some considerations, we could even have a category for that. All I want to know is, is it possible that if, after they get all those concessions, whether it's when it's being built, or when it's maybe resold to a new owner, they convert it from that to more expensive stuff, that there's some, some way of recapturing some of those concessions?
We do that with affordable housing bonus fees. We do recapture in that situation, if we provide affordable housing and they provided.
But Mr. Forbes, that, providing a specific answer to, to a general question like that means that we will miss multiple alternatives. Because the way that affordable housing has been established, and the options that a municipality has, and how they address fees, and how they address the enforcement of continuing or transitioning that affordable to market rate housing, vary widely. Not only in terms of definition of affordable, whether it's workforce, affordable, the, the income of those that are going to be residents, the philosophical discussion of how you want to charge fees for those type of developments, and then the transition from affordable to a market rate situation also carries considerations as well. So as a general answer, I feel very comfortable in telling you that a municipality has options in terms, in terms of how you charge fees. In terms of how we do that, or what the alternatives are, I'd almost like to have a discussion on what you would like to do before we start.
Yeah.
So we can narrow down that discussion a little bit more and actually get into the details.
And then, and then the only thing I don't have in the outline that I probably should have put in the outline, I apologize for that, is council in the past has given certain areas, as well as a redevelopment program. So there is, there are some impact fee exemptions in place. One is for the old 41 for commercial, in the old 41 redevelopment area, so that the city manager can apply some exemptions in that location. And then the other one is, if people had paid impact fees and they were going to increase or intensify the particular use, say they paid storage and now they want to build a medical office there during a time period, and that time period is still occurring, they do not have to pay a increase in the impact fees for that change.
Thank you. Counsel, okay.
All right.
Counsel?
I'm assuming there aren't any questions on parks and community park slides?
One, how long's it?
Out I know.
How long does it take to get to stud, a study done, and about what kind of money are you talking about?
Depends on what you want studied, and they, from the time you signed the contract, I believe the last I had dealt with them, it was somewhere around the neighborhood of three to six months.
I'd say three months, and then count the ordinance, probably another month or two. And that brings a great question. We have our current impact fees, and that would go into the parameters of the cost. If you want to look at other types of impact fees, for example, Cape Coral set, set up a public.
Public service.
I'm going to say public services, impact fee. They have that there, so that they can assume more costs of their police and their fire. There are a lot, there are things that we don't provide services, there are library impact fees. So anything where you have a capital improvement, you can charge a impact fee, can't be providing for general services, cannot be providing for operation maintenance, but if it's something that you can have capital expenditures, you can utilize impact fees.
And locally, I think the jurisdiction that charges the most in terms of the number of impact fees is probably Collier County. And you do have their fees set up as part of your backup, if you want to see different alternatives. I think they charge a library fee, a public, not a public services, but a, a public governmental building fee, so the jail fee. So they have, I won't say completely maximized, but they have increased the number of fees that they're charging to address those public impacts.
Tree fee.
What about charges for expenses?
The study, I believe, ran around 20 to 30,000 last time we did it.
And that's old information, because it's been a long time since Benita Springs has done a study, but that, those were the last numbers that I remember as well.
And the other thing too is, previously we piggybacked on Lee County's study. So there was some data and analysis that was pretty much the same, we were using the same type of model. If you wish to change that model up significantly, the study will, of course, cost more. And there's about two firms that do impact fee studies in the nation.
Well, there's a lot of firms that do them, there are two of them that do them well and do them as a specialty.
Okay, thank you.
Another other firms?
This goes into, into the county fees that, that I discussed a little bit earlier. We do charge these, we do assess them, we do see the improvements within Benita Springs, but they are not based upon city needs, they're based upon county needs in this particular When you look at those, there's two real pieces of information. There is a total page, this is impact fee comparisons in your backup, and then there are the other pages that show the municipalities specifically. And that really gets into how each of those jurisdictions has chosen to address fees. You'll see that some of those, if you look at Cape Coral's, there's not very many fees, and the fees tend to be rather low. If you look at a jurisdiction like Collier County, it's, it's a very different situation. There were also, I looked at, included West Palm Beach and the town of Jupiter in there, and, and you can see that there is a, almost a philosophical difference between the east coast and the west coast in how, how we address these fees. There's different concerns, there's different impacts, but a much different philosophy.
And the differences kind of would be what?
The differences go a little bit into the cost of construction, and the cost of land, and the cost of improvements, but also, while I think there's been a little bit of a relaxed standard for the municipalities in Palm Beach County, at least when I was working there about 15 years ago, there was a very strict standard, especially when it came to, to roads, or what now would be considered general mobility over there, that they were going as far as turning projects down because of lack of road capacity, and the impact fees were reflective of the fact that they were not encouraging growth.
Oh, interesting.
That, I think, has changed to a certain degree.
Okay.
But it is not 180 degrees different.
Thank you.
And I just discussed the local comparisons. This is just a brief overview. I know that there had been some discussion at the budget hearing about where are we high, where are we low, where are we moderate compared to, to other jurisdictions, and this just gives you a little bit of a breakdown. It doesn't exactly say how high, doesn't exactly say how low, but for comparative purposes, here's your, here's your one-page analysis.
John, are you saying that on the first group, that they don't charge anything for parks, or is it, or no one's, for hotels?
No, ma'am, I'm saying, it says for the fees that are lower, that, that would mean that our, those fees, oh, I'm sorry, no parking back fees for hotel, correct.
Just for that group, or does?
Just for that group.
Do you charge park impact fees for hotels?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we?
I'm assuming the, sorry.
I just wanted to confirm that.
I'm assuming the Lee Ca, well, the Lee County fees that are in here are the actual current fees?
Correct.
So they reflect the whole imbroglio that went on a few years ago?
They reflect, if you were to come in today with a project and they assessed you impact fees, that would be the amount that you would have to write a check for. Not, not the, not the 100% value that they then reduced from.
But those fees were severely slashed. I know they went up a little bit recently.
Yes, sir.
Estero has its own impact fees now?
They do.
Or they have Lee County fees?
It's my understanding that they are charging 100% of the Lee County fee, as opposed to the reduced rate that Lee County went to, but.
Okay.
That's what I believe they're doing. I know that they're, they're looking at how they want to handle them now. I just don't know when it's going to come up for them to make a decision.
Okay, thank you.
And now we have reached point of questions, and to kind of lead off this question portion, I know that hotels has come up as a use that's been singled out, and council at least wanted to discuss that. If you will look the first page of your backup on impact fee calculations, the second row from the bottom says 110-room hotel, and if you follow that across, you can see that the fees range from $205,000 for West Palm Beach, to a high end of $755,000 for the city of Benita Springs. Now keep in mind, the $559,520.50 charged in Collier County does not include their water and sewer impact fee, which is going to run approximately $100,000 to $150,000. It depends upon the, the meter size that they would be required, so.
So they're somewhere around 650, 700 is what you're saying?
It's going to depend upon, on their water and sewer demand as to the exact cost, but yes.
Okay.
Plus or minus. And it was my understanding that this council was looking, at least in the short term, to come up with a competitive fee for hotels, so that we were somewhere generally in the middle. We weren't excessive, but we were definitely not going to be the lowest, addressing the impacts, but not standing out in terms of cost. Currently, your hotel room, per room impact fee for roads is $6,568.
Let me just make a, a point. I believe the only thing that's happened on this council is one person asked for this information, and made some points along the lines that you have talked about.
And if, if anyone would like to, to guide this in a different direction?
No, 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 I'm just saying, I think that's what happened. I, I don't think there was a consensus as to anything, as opposed to a concern expressed by one party, and asked to come back.
Okay.
Which is what we're doing.
And now I will present for your discussion, and however you wish, wish to proceed with this, just, just an idea. If you will look through the backup materials for the other jurisdictions, what you'll generally see, for those municipalities that charge, or jurisdictions that charge per room, road impact fees generally tend to run somewhere between 34 and 3,800, plus or minus. Your current road impact fee of $6,568 per room, if you're looking, and if this council wishes.
I'm sorry, John, where are you? I'm sorry, my apologies.
Those, if you look through the backup information for other jurisdictions, you'd have to find the, the specific row, but each of those jurisdictions shows a charge for hotels.
All right, thank you.
And so basically, every page, essentially. If you're looking to be competitive with those jurisdictions that were included in this informal study, and I think that those jurisdictions reflect the general trend in this area, reducing those by 3,000 per room puts you generally in the meaty part of the bell curve. If you wish to discuss that, or ask any questions on that, I'm here for those. If you do not wish to be right in the middle, we can go a different direction.
Why, why is it that we're so high at the moment?
Mr. Mayor, I wish I had an answer for you, but our fees are basically adopted from Lee County, and they've been studied since then, but I've looked back in my memory, and I cannot remember a time that anybody specifically said, we really want to look at, at charging higher impact fees for hotels.
So, for example, can you compare where Benita is to Naples? And can you compare where Naples, Benita Springs is to Fort Myers?
You are generally $3,000 per room higher for road impact fees, plus or minus.
Than?
Than both of those jurisdictions.
Than both.
Yes, sir.
What's the next closest?
City of Naples charges $3,544 per room. The city, the village of Estero charges $3,745 per room. Lee County charges $3,745 per room. Collier County charges $3,544 per room. The, the rates are a little bit lower for the town of West Palm Beach and, or the city of West Palm Beach and the, and the town of Jupiter, but I don't have those right in front of me.
I'm trying to understand. Shows on here 2210 and 1600.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
I'm, I'm just trying to understand this. The numbers you have on this page, which is, what do you want to call it, John, the second page?
Okay.
So you, you just recited as to road impact fees, but 10 minutes ago, we were talking about, in answer to the question about Naples, or let's say Collier County, that in this example, we're at 755, and they are at somewhere around 650 or 700,000.
The, the city of Naples is at 413,270.
City of Naples, all right.
And then Collier County is at 559,520.50, plus water and sewer.
Plus water and sewer, which is 100 to 150,000, which we don't have.
Correct.
Okay. So just to understand this, so in your charts in the back, like Jupiter here, they have roads, parks, public buildings, different impact fees, and certain do, are those all loaded into these impact fee comparisons?
Yes, sir, they are.
Other than your notations on water and sewer for Collier?
Yes, sir, they are. What, what I tried to do with this, and, and as a full disclosure, for some reason, I was not born with the, the ability to calculate accurate impact fees on a regular basis, so I did have others check my math. I tried to come up with typical uses and compare those uses that you would see. So the calculation that we're talking about hotels, we have seen, for, for most of the, the chain hotels that you'll see are plus or minus 110 rooms. And so that's why 110 rooms was chosen here as a comparison. It's, it's, I won't say a perfect number, that we have an example that's under review currently, but it was something that we would expect to see, and other places could expect to see.
And then I do have a question about your Estero numbers, because you've got those as the same as Lee. I'm looking at the example.
Yes, sir.
110, all right, 439, 439, right? But Lee's been slashed, you said Estero's at 100% of?
Well, I wasn't, with Estero, I've got to double check, because they, they are, the last I heard was they were looking to, to analyze their fees, but I didn't know if that meant they were going to go forward with studies, or how they wanted to approach it.
Well, it's relevant here, because, it's highly relevant here, right, if we're doing comparisons? Because on this 110-room hotel, we're being told Benita is 755, I'm doing you a rough math, Collier is 700,000. Lee, I know that number is heavily slashed. So, I mean, unless we want to follow Lee, we might as well cut every impact fee if we want to follow Lee, and I wouldn't suggest we do that. So then what's, what's the 100% number for Lee, if Estero is not there? Because this, this is the cut number.
Yes, it is.
That you're showing for Estero.
It is.
So it may be, just for analytical, I'm just trying to understand it, all right? In other words, it, it may be that we're not far off of Collier County. It may be we're not far off of Estero, or at least 100% of the Lee loading, full loading. I don't know this from this.
Fair enough, and, and, and I don't disagree with that statement. And I think that one of the reasons why hotels might be a weakness is while the height is now within the city of Benita Springs, and you do have a handful of hotels here, there has not been new hotels. there has not been new hotels constructed recently. It's been a long period of time since this topic has even come up. There are currently, you know, depending on how you want to include a seriousness of a, of a discussion or an application, anywhere from three to seven hotel sites that, that could be coming into Benita Springs, which is one of the reasons I think we have this particular discussion on this particular impact fee right now, which I think is timely. But up until this point, there hasn't been a discussion on hotel impact fees because there hasn't been a hotel that has come in.
Counsel, are there questions?
I have one, this is more for Audrey. If we were to reduce hotel impact fees, we could have, could we have something like, it'll be in effect for say 18 months or two years, and if you don't have a building permit by then, and we're past that deadline, they're back to the original?
Absolutely. Not a problem in phasing impact fees or doing any kind of reduction. It's only when you're doing increase that we have issues.
For, I think I'm the one that was one that caused this little exchange about the whole council, but anyway, I plead guilty. I think if we do it, and I'm personally in favor of doing something, we should have a sunset, and the sunset is the building permit. Not granting something to land that goes on forever and ever. It's got to be project-specific and there's got to be something tangible. And a, and a building permit, if it expires, it does after some period of time, then they're back to square one.
Isn't it the case that if, on these, I have an issue because we have existing proposals that are sort of percolating. These individual projects can get an independent study and ask to have them reduced, so, so if these are out of line or however they do these kinds of things, it is possible that they come, could come back to community development and say, look, you're out of line, will you consider it? So we don't need to go to reducing the impact fees because they're able to do that. Is that a costly process or what, or, I mean, why is that easier than?
It, it does cost. The studies are performed by consultants that, that charge a fee. However, what we found, and we, thank you for bringing that up, we have been rather accepting of independent fee calculations that ultimately you would see and approve, but the amount of money that they have saved off of the, the fee that would have been charged in our schedule was enough to pay for the, the study and to still save them significant money.
I mean, the whole process of, you know, I don't think we should do this for individual projects. I don't think that's a good government process personally. And I, I, it's not clear to me that we, we may be a little bit out of line, but how much out of line, I don't think it's clear from the information we have there. So before we even entertain this, I think we should have a clear understanding. And my question is about if, if the difference is primarily the roads, generally do we have the same impact fee for all categories of roads within, they're all different, like single-family home is different from multifamily homes, that road impact fee would be different. It's not per unit on multifamily unit?
It, it is.
It is.
It's, but there is a different fee for multi and single.
And that came out of a previous study that said the, the cost of having a single-family home is X and, okay. And so that's why the hotel has a different one. So there, originally, there was some logic to having a higher road per unit fee there when they did the study, I assume.
Correct.
And they would have to do the same thing.
And there's been a lot of changes since the last time that, that we have done a study in terms of not only hotels, but the entire transportation manual has been updated twice, I believe, in terms of, of what they use for their, their data, which is the basis of trip generation, which is then used to calculate the...
So there might be a different trip generation now?
Yes, ma'am.
That was used when this was done and whenever we last did it.
In fact, I would feel very confident that there was a difference, it's just a matter of how much of a difference.
And I just want to point out, it's 8:56, so we have four minutes before our next meeting. And do we have other questions? Certainly don't want to cap this or cut this short or look at numbers that aren't complete. So Carl, what are our next steps here?
Well, I was going to ask you what council wants to do. My thoughts on this is that if we are out of whack and we're at a competitive disadvantage with other communities, that we could look at a, as the council member said, perhaps a temporary reduction, if you don't want to lose these projects, because the bottom line is, is that you might be reducing revenues received by reducing the rate, but if the rate remains high and the project goes away, you have, you get nothing in impact fees, unless another development comes along for some other use. So I guess we're looking for direction from council as to whether you need additional information, if you're prepared to give some direction to staff, as to what, what you would like us to do with regards to impact fees generally and hotels specifically.
Fred?
Can't we continue this in the next meeting? I mean, there's nothing that says we can't, is there?
Carl?
Yes, you can.
I know if we do that...
Continue it when? What portion?
For council either?
Under council business?
Yeah, council business. Later in the meeting?
Okay.
Be fine?
Great.
Later in the evening?
Yeah.
That's a Freudian slip.
Freudian slip there, yeah. Go ahead, Mike, I'm sorry.
Is it possible to get the hard numbers from Astero in the meantime?
Well, the numbers that you have are what Astero is charging. If you go look at pulling their permits, this is what they have from their rate sheet. In terms, I think that there is a question as to what the fully loaded number is.
Yeah, can we find out if that's 100% or if that's...
I'll do the research, I'll see what I can find.
I think what also council is asking for us to clarify, what would the rate be had Lee County not done the 70 and then 40 reduction? You're asking what the original dollar amount was.
Correct, the fully loaded number without the reduction.
Yeah, I guess the issue with that is, we don't know if Lee County is ever going to go back to that in the near future. I mean, they're set to do a new impact fee study in 2000, February of 2018. In 2015, they are on a three-year rotation when they do those studies. In 2015, they, they elected not to do it and to do the reduction. So we don't know what they're going to do in 18 or not, whether they're going to stay the same, go up, or do another study.
Well, I would imagine they would do the study, it's just a matter of what they do with that information. It could be a very similar decision as to what they did this, this most recent time, which was to reduce that fee.
Their first reduction from 100, their first reduction was an 80% reduction. So they were charging 20% across the board from what they had been. Now they're up to about 44, okay? Because they're starting to tier the increases. So I don't know, you might be able to calculate it. We could just make a quick call and find out, you know, where they're at exactly.
I, I would just say, my one takeaway is that we are basically where Collier County is. I mean, I'm hearing 700 versus 755 for 110-room hotel, is that incorrect?
From, from what I'm looking at and the information I have, I think that we're in the same ballpark as Collier.
All right, thank you.
I, I would ask, doesn't, doesn't BSU, I mean, they have water and sewer under them down in the Collier County? We do not have water and sewer under us. That's a BSU fee? I mean, is there, are there fees that BSU charge that we're not involved with?
Oh, the, the, the fees that BSU charges for meters are going to be their own rate schedule, and I have not compared those to Collier County utilities. But if you're just, the, the only thing that we've looked at is the impact fees, a total fee analysis versus if you want to build a 110-room hotel, that, those fees are going to be hot, much higher than you see here, because it's going to include everything from potential zoning applications to development orders or site development plans.
Right, we're just doing impact fees here.
Right, and then the other thing, real quick, and I know the mayor wants to get going, is like you said in the beginning, Collier County charges a lot more fees, as in their jail fee, their law enforcement fees are all included in that where ours is not.
Correct.
We're going to, we're going to hold this, we'll move this onto the business portion of the meeting. It's nine o'clock and why don't we say we'll start the council meeting at 9:05. And there is chance for public comment at this time, if anybody from the public would like to speak?
The, one of the considerations that has to be made with the impact fees is the value of the dirt as it relates to the fee. The fee of 700 or 800,000 dollars that Benita Springs would like to collect on a 110-room hotel is roughly 40% of the purchase price of the dirt. That ratio is what queers the deal. If the, if the impact fee relative to the price of the dirt is too high, the cost of construction gets out of whack, which then reduces the rate of return for the eventual end user. That's the rub. Our land prices are not as high as Collier County. So if we're charging the same amount per square foot or per room, but our land is half the cost, the impact on the bottom line numbers to the end user is a much higher. Second is with all of the commercial land that we have out there that's ready to go, a lot of eyes are on Benita. We have land that's cleared, filled, entitled, concurrent with roads, it's quote-unquote shovel-ready. And that's not the case in Collier, it's not the case in Astero and a lot of places in Lee County. We have the gold and we have the businesses that want to come here and create jobs and create further tax base. And we need to, to take a hard look at not losing the momentum that's out there with specific industries. Right now hotels are hot, ALF is hot, industrial buildings are hot, and real estate goes in waves. And we have to, we have to take a hard look at the ability for the city to attract these businesses now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Steinmer, you get more people, you get more problems, you get more pollution and you get more politics. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Okay, this workshop's adjourned.